Hey, let's call to order the jail district board of directors meeting, work session. Today's Tuesday, May 23, we're meeting in the supervisor's hearing room, Pursuit Ares 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the county board will attend in person or by phone. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are timed for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call, District One, District Two,
District Three, Antoniary's here. All supervisors are present and in person.
So we will kick off with agenda item number one. Ms. Gilman, I'll hand it off to you.
Sure. So last week, I think it was, yes, we had about the general fund budget. And as a result of that conversation, I thought it was important for us to hit on the jail district funding and expenses because this could impact the general fund as we go forward, depending on how things are handled with the jail district from an election standpoint. So the first slide I have is an overview of maintenance of effort, revenue, total revenue. The revenue includes other sources of revenue for the jail, whether that be housing of Department of Corrections individuals for a period of time or other revenue coming in from other state sources and federal sources. So then there's their total revenue, expenses, the difference between those, and then we calculate it in their funding requests and bottom line, additional funding needed. What that means is of the MOE, the maintenance of effort that's statutorily required that we transfer from the general fund to the jail district, that's 6.7 million. The revenue coming in from operations and maintenance as well as the jail tax is 351,000. Total revenue then is 7 million. Expenses are 7.4 million. 378,000 difference. Their funding requests, which we'll go over here shortly, are an additional 288,000. And that leaves a delta of 667,000 between what the maintenance of effort can cover. Got that right? Yes, I'm conferring. Make sure I said that all right. This 667,000, though, includes...
The 588.
The deduction of the 588, which is the Sierra Vista facility swap. It's currently budgeted, but the board, they have not hired the personnel required for that facility swap to use their current subs- moving their current substation in Sierra Vista to the juvenile detention and juvenile detention moving to the current substation. That was a facility swap that was approved by the prior board. The money was transferred from professional services in the new jail to operation and maintenance. We could reverse that and put that money elsewhere, back into the jail tanks, new jail revenue. And then we are also deducting from operation and maintenance our jail project manager, that's Bill Bordeaux. For reasons, I think that were, a decision was made out of expediency to put his wages and ERs in the operation and maintenance activity of the jail. I'm recommending that we move those into the new jail because he is the new jail project manager. So it's appropriate for him to be under that activity line. So all of that to say, we're still at that $667,000 delta beyond the MOE. The jail district funding request, this is what we received from the sheriff's office for the nurse practitioner for jail medical. Detention health services operational increase, that's just various items within their lines that have increased in cost. A part-time detention officer increase of 40,000, this is a program. They're seeking to have more part-time detention officers. This will help them reduce overtime in the jail, and they do not receive benefits. So versus hiring additional full-time staff or accruing additional overtime. This is a cost-saving program.
Mr. Crosby. So these part-time detention officers are not county employees, is that correct?
No, they are. They're considered part-time.
They will become county employees. They are not currently...
Right, they're not currently. And then they did request a salary adjustment of 213, oh, almost $214,000.
For the whole jail?
For detention officers and staff, yeah.
Or is the percent of increase? Was that part of the market?
No, that is...
This is separate from that?
This would be in lieu of, in lieu of a market. So they, if market at 94%, their salary adjustment or a 3% colo would be about $135,000. So this would be more than that.
This would be more than 3%?
Yes, correct. This would include all of their jail district employees, admin staff and medical, not just the detention officers as your plan was.
How many people are that? I think it's 96.
And that's not just detention officers, that's additional. That's medical personnel, the nursing staff, the...
So who pays the medical personnel?
It comes out of the jail district.
What is their equivalent for such, such type of employee that is working in the jail as a medical staff person of person?
You mean like the nurses?
Yeah, if that's what, if that's what they're called. What equivalent do those positions work at that aren't in the jail?
So the only other area that we have nurses in the county is in the public health department, in clinical services.
Okay. What's the difference between the salaries if they're in, in the public health versus the jail?
I don't know on an individual basis, but I believe they're the same market. Although the jail may have a slightly different, because they're dealing with a more challenging atmosphere. So they may pay people more than they get at public health. I'm just not sure off the top of my head.
Okay. Can you find out?
Yes. There are currently 66 individuals.
So these are all the vacancies. These are all the people that actually work in the jail?
Who work in the jail as well as the nurses and some admins staff too.
And so when was the last time there was a pay increase?
Oh, last year. We do salary adjustments every year.
So this is above 3% that everyone else...
What, what they would be requesting is above the 3% that Frank had proposed, or Stranting, I had proposed. Yeah.
Is, was there something that was happening in the state legislature as far as the increase? Was that, was that for something else? I don't know why I'm drawing...
I think in the court, this...
That was the, yeah, that was the return to PSRS or 23% match or something like that. It was on the 401K.
So wasn't there also a bill mandating minimum? There was also a bill.
Yeah, they offer...
Mandating minimum salary.
4% they turned it down.
Officer.
4% match.
This, this, people turned that down on the budget.
Stakeholders didn't, didn't want it.
So, so I guess when, when you determine what it is, I'm interested in knowing. You've got the equivalent position nurse, and they're either in the jail, it's a nurse in the jail or a nurse not in the jail that is a county employee. So I'm interested in what the, what the difference is.
Is she part-time or is that just a $12,000 pay raise?
No, so the, the nurse practitioner is currently funded between health department and the jail, and this would be moving her completely to the jail.
Will she be funded by a grant or something?
This is the one that is partially funded by the jail enhancement. They're running out of money. I have to correct myself, yeah. So the nurse practitioner is partially funded out of jail enhancement funds, which is a separate special revenue fund, and that fund has dwindled. And it comes to us through state allocation, and that fund has dwindled. So it needs to be funded through a different mechanism.
Chairman Antoniary?
Oh, Commander Bradshaw is online if you would like to hear from him. He's online on Teams. He may have corrections to something.
Hey, go ahead, Commander, if you want to add a comment.
Thanks. I'm here with Sheriff Daniels. That fund, that $12,000 actually comes out of the inmate welfare fund. And, and the reason, the reason that that, that fund is being eliminated or dwindling down so far is because of the change in FCC regulations where we can no longer get a commission on phone calls or video visits.
So they, yeah, they can't charge for phone calls?
Thank you, Commander Bradshaw. There we go. Close. Too many things in my head.
Yeah, me too.
So bottom line, we need additional funding in order to meet these funding requests of $667,242. We can do that through increasing the MOE transfer from the general fund. So instead of this 6 million that we currently transfer over, we can do 6.7 million that we currently transfer over. We can do that plus 667,000. Or we can take the transfer from the half-cent tax to cover that. Those are the two revenue options we have for the jail district. And I'm seeking guidance on the preference of the board or, or other direction.
Okay, I'm curious, as, as you noted, that we're getting to the end of, of the budget process. So you must have an idea, at least in your head, how's everything looking in terms of our requests being made versus the, the amount of money that we have estimated is coming in. So how's it going?
It improved from the last time since we elected to reduce your discretionary spending in the form. So our ability to give market rates has increased. We're still balancing at roughly the same. So we're still in, for revenues, we're still in the positive above our planned expenditures.
So on the community enhancement funds, so what I have in my existing budget is gone?
No.
Okay, but for the future, reduced to how much for the future?
I wanted to update you on that.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. That's what I was saying.
That's when you leave.
To help the food bank, because there's a lot of people and some really dire things that need to be done. So, yeah, you're gonna have to tell me.
What do we say, if we're gonna take it from 75 down to 25?
For next year or this year?
Next year, that's certain.
Yeah, I better spend like that.
Did somebody spend all your community enhancement funds for...
No, I'd be, not like you.
I would have spent any of yours.
I'm gonna have to spend it, so, but I have good, good things and I'm just spending it, spending it. Okay.
So we need, we need to talk about this Sierra Vista swap.
Because the number, if, if that stays, stands, then I need to add that back in.
So this was a higher, I think six people, is that what it was?
The idea, as I recall, was to increase total capacity for juveniles. For juvenile.
No, that's not for juvenile.
If you use what has been formerly a juvenile facility by the quote new hospital, or was a juvenile facility, maybe still is.
They have temporary holding there until they transfer them.
But I mean, do we, do we... Much be more for new inmates? I mean, I thought the jail population was dropping.
So Commander Bradshaw, would you like to explain that initiative? Thank you.
Sure. So it's, it, our population is pretty steady, but we're looking at specialty population. So currently, we only have 19 beds in the Sierra Vista substation. And in that juvenile facility, which is a much better facility, it's better designed, has 42 beds. We're able to separate people into four different areas, and it's a lot more secure. So that's, that's why we wanted to do that. And, and the ask was for eight detention officers. We didn't ask for any more supervision or any more support staff. It was just eight additional detention officers and, and one medical person.
So this is, this is for, this is the county jail in Sierra Vista?
So, okay, over on Colonia Day Salute, we have the juvenile, it's currently a juvenile detention facility that is underutilized because we have a contract with Pinell County.
Right, so they're going to Pinell County. They're not even staying there, right?
Not more than nine or two. And there's a low number, low population number right now.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
You, I think you used the term maybe special population or something like that. Is that what you called the type of person that would go into that facility?
Correct. So that would be, that would be juveniles that are charged as adults, especially male and female. This morning, we had six males, juveniles that were charged as adults, and one female. And when we, especially a female, when we have a female juvenile, we have to keep them, everybody, all the juveniles, we have to keep sight and sound separated from the rest of the population. And when we have a single female, it takes up an entire pot or an entire living area just to house that one individual. So that could be up to 16 to 32 beds. So having this facility to use for those specialty populations, protective custody from protective custody, the juvenile males and females that are charged as adults would be really beneficial to help ease the pain at the current facility.
I don't understand. Thank you, Commander. Is there any other that qualify as special population besides juveniles?
Yeah, absolutely. So if we have somebody in protective custody who needs to be separated from our protective custody, we only have one protective custody area. So if they're former law enforcement, if they're a, you know, a serial child molester, whatever the case may be, where their safety is in true danger from being in the general population, then we can put those individuals in those living areas and separate them out and not have to take up more very needed space at the main jail.
Mr. Chair, did you have an additional comment?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not wrapping my hands around this. I'm trying to, trying to...
Juveniles have to be separated.
No, I, I got, I got that. So the facility currently now, before the swap, had how many beds in it?
Yeah, so that's the Sierra Vista substation, which is across...
No, the juvenile, the juvenile detention center had...
42?
42, I believe, Commander Bradshaw, said, the current juvenile detention center.
And that's not utilized. So what was, what was the other detention?
The substation we currently use has 19. It has 10 on one side and nine on the other, and it's just two little living areas. And one side is male and one side is female, and that's it.
So it's 10 and nine, and so what's the 42-bed facility split out at?
It's 12, I think it's in 12, 12. I'm not sure on the other one. I think eight. And there's four different living areas, and there, I don't know exactly what the numbers are in each living area, but I know the total is 42.
What was, what was your general train of thought there, Mr. Chair?
I'm trying to see where all the bodies are coming from. That's what I'm trying to understand. Where, you know, that's what's contributing this 588K right here.
The staffing necessary to cover all those bodies.
So I'm trying to see, so if you had two, two areas, we would, one could argue you need two officers to cover those two areas, one in each area, right? Or can one officer cover both?
No, so we'd have one officer in each area, and then there's a main control room, and then a booking officer.
Then four?
We're gonna utilize the current staff from the current jail in Sierra Vista, add those eight and able to do that. And that's, that's just gonna put us to get by, because our original plan was to come to you guys and ask for 20 additional staff, which included a sergeant and another lieutenant. But, so we, we backed that off, saying, look, we can get by with just this eight in order to get into this building and, and alleviate some of those pressures on our specialty population.
Mr. Chair, did you have a comment first?
Do you have any mental health inmates that you're putting into this?
They're in the regular jail.
They're in the regular jail?
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're in the, the main jail.
As I was looking at the binder like Ms. Gomez has right there, I noticed that our data point stopped with 2023 data. So I would want to know, is that the, is that the most up-to-date data we can get? Or can we get...
Are you talking on the jail planning study?
Populations, crime, everything. This, this data is from the DPS, and I tried to find, whoa, where did it go from the DPS? And that was what was produced from Chin, right? Is that what you have here?
Yeah.
Okay. And so when I looked at the up-down graphs, the last data point was 2023. Now it's 2025. It seems like we ought to have another data point on it for, at least for 2024, I would hope. But, you know, it's halfway through. I know, I know there's a lot of lag with a lot of that stuff. But to the chairman's point, if the population is going down, and we don't know that it's going down, we can't make a, a good decision necessarily on what the, what the facilities need in terms of personnel and so on and so forth.
I mean, I, 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 I would, again, I'm just speculating, because I don't have the, the numbers, that with the current border security efforts that have been put into place, and we've seen this traumatic reduction, you know, from what I understand, of cross-border crimes. I don't know if that's just in Texas or just in New Mexico or just in Yuma or just, you know, what is the impact to Cochise County? I would assume there is some significant reduction that's occurring now because of the inability for people to pick up and smuggle people now is much harder. So the likelihood of somebody coming down from Phoenix in a rental car and picking up four illegal aliens running through Cochise County 90 miles an hour to try to get back to Phoenix has probably dropped to a degree. So I would think those, I mean, the ones that are arrested and awaiting trial are still sitting in there from before. But I mean, the new numbers has gotten, we have to start seeing a decrease. I mean, everybody else is claiming they're seeing a dramatic drop in cross-border crimes. I mean, so I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Bradshaw, I don't know if you're looking at the same binder that I am, but this one's from Chin Planning, and, and I guess we're gonna look at it later in the afternoon. But I'm looking at page 2.6 or 2-6, 2-7, 2-9, and probably, well, it's got 2-11. And, and there's these graphs going up and down from 2015 to 2023, for instance. And so as you can see, you know, they stopped 2023. It'd be nice to, to know what we're expecting. So if, if we can't, if, if we can't figure out what this is from Chin Planning, perhaps we find out what, what that, that 2024 data point is from the sheriff's department. Going to me?
Yeah.
Well, let's see. So they do, they do, Commander's on the phone. We can just ask him. They do, they do a rolling weekly, is that what you guys did? I remember getting a brief from you one time, you maintain a weekly number of inmates by week?
We do it daily.
You do it daily?
Okay, well, Mr. Bradshaw, do you have, do you indeed have the binder that I'm talking about or not?
I do not have it in front of me.
Okay, that's fine. Then we will refer it to you at a later date. But basically, you've got titles like court filings, felony filings.
Oh, that's attorney's office.
I know, I know.
But criminal justice trends, what's this one? All the case filings, no matter who, who, who we get it from.
Right, and I can provide...
It's not decreasing.
Well, what I'm getting at is the daily, the daily jail population should be dropping.
So I agree that the, the smuggling and the pursuits are dropping, but our population has not been dropping. So I don't know what, I haven't looked into as to why, but I know on the road, you know, I talk to my counterparts, and we're not having as many pursuits as we've had in the past. But our jail population this morning is consistent with what it's been for the last six months.
And I have, just anecdotally, I have heard from the defense attorneys that there have been quite a few higher increase in petitions to revoke probation. That's been a very busy sector for them.
So that's making up the delta from the smuggling side? We're picking it up with probation violations?
I don't have that, I don't have that up, but...
I think you're gonna hear that this afternoon from, from Chin Planning is that, you know, one of the major, one of the major reasons people are in jail is because of probation violations. We violate a lot of people.
Probation violations are the main factor in people being in jail is because their probation has been revoked.
There was, I mean, this is juvenile petitions to revoke, I heard you said. This is page 219. So perhaps the sheriff's department can be provided with, we'll sit down and all be looking at the same sheet.
No, they haven't. It's in the, attached to the agenda item. So it is a challenge as to how we will meet the ongoing operations of the jail, but it will have a general fund impact.
Can somebody get me the floor plans for both of these facilities? Just like, I mean, I don't want to have to go look at them physically. I could just look at the floor plan. I just want to see how they're partitioned out, and then if I can get an explanation of staffing on, on like why, you know, how, how many people you need, like one guy in the control room, one guy has to be here, one guy has to be here, some kind of explanation for that. That'd be nice, just for my understanding. I'm, I'm still struggling with this right now.
Are you struggling with the idea of the number of staff necessary for the number of beds, the, the ratio?
You also have to think about days off.
No, I, I got you, and training and vacations and stuff, but I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying. So they got four guys per shift running the current 19-bed facility, right? Is that the, is that correct? Commander Bradshaw, four guys?
Total. We have one or two. We try to keep two in there all the time, but there's sometimes that we only have one. And we've already been warned from, from ASIP that, you know, if, if we continue to staff like that, that we are gonna probably lose some insurance coverage.
Having only one person in the jail is so high risk.
Well, yeah, 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 yeah.
We can't have just one person there.
So, so right now, like, what is the number in, in Sierra Vista?
Commander Bradshaw, did you say that you have four staff members in Sierra Vista?
No, I mean inmates.
Oh, and, oh, that you, how, how many do you house in Sierra Vista currently?
This morning, there were 12.
And then we have one female and the rest were males, you said?
No, that was juveniles that were in the main jail in Bisbee. We had five male and, and one juvenile, I mean, one female, all juvenile.
Oh, that's in Bisbee?
Correct. So all, we're still gonna run, we still wanna run that other side of the Sierra Vista, the new facility that we wanna get to swap with as an intake, just like we do now. Because that's all it is, is an intake for the, for the west side of the county. So it'll be the two, you know, whatever specialty populations, and then local law enforcement, their arrest people won't have to drive all the way to Bisbee. They can still go and, and book people there, and then we can transfer them to the main jail if they're, if they stay past their initial appearance.
Mr. Bradshaw, it just so happens, I'm looking at this page 220, and you may not be looking at the same one, but one is, one chart is called juveniles detained Cochise County, and it's 2023. It must be an average of 23, or correction, 31. And it, it talks about a 40, 40-capacity Cochise County juvenile detention facility. And, and we know that now those, those juveniles are generally sent to Pinell County with some exceptions that you talked about, depending on whether there's special population or just waiting to be transported. Is that correct?
No, I want to make sure that we, we designate between a juvenile referral, which is just a true juvenile that is referred for delinquency, whatever the case may be. Those are the ones that are sent to Pinell County. The ones that are charged as adults, they, they stay in jail until they go to, to court. And if they're found guilty, then they go to adult juvenile corrections. So there's a big difference between the two. And what I'm talking about housing there is the ones that we currently house in the main jail, which this morning we had five males and one female.
Okay. And then the other chart I'm looking at, which the last data point is 2024, is called juvenile average daily population Cochise County. And for 2024, the average... And, uh, for 2024, the average was 2.4. So, uh, it, it would be, it would be conducive for us to, like I said, be all looking at the same sheet of music when we're talking about that, probably get us a little better grasp.
Right, um, but I, I believe that 2.4 is not the ones that we're referring to that are housed in the jail. Those are the ones that we send to Pinal County.
Right. Juvenile that are charged with delinquency crimes, um, are a much lower population than juveniles charged as adults.
I'm struggling. I don't, I don't understand it. That's why I'm having a hard time with it.
Well, it's okay, it's just you gotta get, get the information that you're asking for.
So what, what would you have done if you didn't have the MOE and the jail tax? I mean, what would, what, what would you, what would have been planned if, if we were here without that?
If we were here, go back two years and we were just, it would be funded out of the general fund. Um, there would have been the, uh, just as any other department, the jail would have made funding requests to the Board of Supervisors for increases to their budget. And it would continue to take up more and more of the general fund expenses.
So then the question I guess comes down to, do we fund it out of the general fund? Or do we use the jail district tax to pay for it?
My only concern too is like, you know, the county, the county roads are to the point where people can't drive on them?
No, I, I, I got you, but I mean.
I, so I don't know, I mean, is it, is it jail district?
We're looking at for the swap, right? You're looking at almost 600K right there, which is actually pretty close to that number there. That is that?
That's mine.
That's, so it would be 1.1 million?
Yeah.
What?
Cause these, that number includes past increases to the jail operation and maintenance as well as the funding requests.
And these things you built passport for SAW were going to be issues. And so that's why they were so going to hold on.
On having an additional revenue source for the jail because it is a very expensive venture for the county.
What, what was the date of the so-called SB facility swap that was voted on?
We did that in late December. I don't know if that was one of those December.
Well, not the 31st.
That might've been.
I think they were asking for the stock and then they had lowered it.
They lowered it, yeah.
Okay, then, then, uh, what I would suggest is going back and see what the discussion was whenever it was voted on.
There was a PowerPoint presentation that I can make sure the board has its hands on.
Really? What? 1.1 million?
So that was actually 1.2 mil. So 1.2 million is for, we're talking the swap, the, the increase for salaries. Did you include nurses?
Includes nurses, includes, and then the 40,000 for part-time detention officers, which assists with keeping on the overtime budget lower.
And your, and pensions. Long-term.
Right, within operations and maintenance salary wages for current employees, including the pensions.
So pay, pay and fill out of the jail district funds, that's fine by me.
Right, that's.
Yeah, and then just where you move, whatever. And if we have to pay it back later, we could always pay it back later if the vote goes, goes, goes the other way, we could pay that back. But if we take a million two out of, out of, out of it right now.
Out of the sale, you can either take it out of the tax revenue from the sales tax for the jail or take it out of the general funds. And that's my quandary is taking it out of the general fund contingent, it would be from contingency.
And you wouldn't bust the expenditure limit?
I have concerns. Then we're not going to bust it, but we keep getting closer and closer to that ceiling every year. And I prefer to have a larger buffer for those un- un- unknowns, especially
I understand.
when we don't have a state budget gap.
Okay.
So what happens if we fund this and we take it out of the jail tax and then things go south?
We have to pay it back. You gotta pay it back.
Uh, what, what I was gonna say is when, when we're talking about this before and I was trying to get a loan from our friend Kathy Traywick a couple of times, that wasn't going to work out. That's, that was kind of my concern is, is the contingency business and that's.
But that, that, that become, this is all recurring costs?
I understand.
That, that, so, you know, 1.2 million in recurring cost.
But we have, we have the, the elephant in the room, which is, is taxed in a pass or not when we reduce.
That, that, yeah, that, you're, well, that's not a word. Regardless of.
I was going to say irregardless.
But regardless, regardless of the, the tax itself passing or not, I'm looking at an additional 1.2, 1.2 million in non-recurring costs? Or recurring costs, I'm sorry, recurring costs where, where, you know, this is, this is, this is significant cost growth, yeah?
Every year.
I understand. So when we have been with the sheriff and his representatives, uh, and, and they really, all, all the departments, I've said something like, you either can have maybe more people or more benefits and salaries, but to get both is, is, uh, you know, much less likely. And then with, with the, the business about contingency or not, when I was trying to get a loan from Kathy Traywick about, oh, I know, it leads to avoid paying interest. If, if we build a jail, try to try to avoid paying interest, but, you know, that, that's not going to happen. But the point is there is, there is that rainy day fund and it's there for a rainy day.
I don't want to get into the sheriff's lane and telling him how to deploy officers and all that other stuff. But if we're seeing a reduction in.
Well, we don't know yet.
We don't know yet, but I'm just saying, I, I'm just saying, you know, maybe there's a management piece to this where he could move people from other areas into the jail or vice versa. I know they're two different entities, right? Deputies and correction officers are two different entities, so that's part of the problem. The other, the other thing is maybe, maybe as he loses some deputies, instead of replacing them with another guy, move that money over to hire a corrections guy rather than hire a deputy.
Well, like, like you said, you know, that's kind of, you know, it's, it's up to, it's up to us to figure out.
Well, I don't want to tell him where he can't, can't put cops.
Right.
Right? I mean, but, I mean, we do have to look at this million two in growth, cost growth here.
Don't worry, it'll get worse.
This, in the Chin study, I mean, yeah, from what, I mean, it's a lot of information, but don't they talk about this?
They, they do, it will be hitting on, uh,
The management style.
future expenses of a, of a new jail as well.
Well, when I was, when I was skimming this movie and thinking, okay, this is, this is generally about the jail and looking at these charts and as my colleagues pointed out, whoa, you're talking about, uh, probation and you're talking about court cases and stuff like that. So, uh, but we still need, since it's all related, we need, we need those data points going. If they can be ascertained, then we need to get the latest data points for the 2024 or estimates or whatever we, in my opinion. Because 2023 is a while ago now and we're trying to figure out really 2026, this, this fiscal year is 2026. Is it not?
It's that we're planning.
So, so our data, our last data point's three years past the fiscal year. It'd be nice, I mean, it's just like the PSPRS, you try to get the, the latest data. Sometimes you can, sometimes you're not, and, and you don't know, whoever, whoever's in charge of the data, are they putting it out every year or they putting, sometimes I thought PSPRS was coming out every two years. Well, our, uh, our, uh, data person is busy and we only, we only got half as many data people as, as we should. So we're gonna, we're only going to put this out every two years, every year, like, be better. So I don't know what's being produced.
There seem to be, to be a lot of moving factors, right?
That is the challenge.
The, the thing too is that here's this whole study and from what I gather, based on a lot of, um, management, we're looking at the way we do everything. And yet I feel like we're behind the, the ball because here's all, you can do all this stuff and save money and reduce the inmate population, yet we're looking at now, but no, it's increasing and it's going to, you know, go this, we're creating 1.2 million every year. So I'm like, when do we bring this all together and, and look at what's been? Because there's pages of stuff in here. You know, at one time I was thinking, well, who am I to sit there and tell, to decide how the judges and the sheriffs manage people and what kind of policies they put through and all that stuff? But, but, but it comes with the money and when it comes to the money, I signed up. But, but a lot of this stuff seems like if we were to implement it, we would save all this money. So when are we going to implement this? Cause this seems like it's all very far future.
Yeah.
Well, we can probably get into that later this afternoon with the consultant.
But, but I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the, this is significant growth. And it just doesn't jive to me if we're seeing dividends. I don't understand.
The, the, the growth in, in expenses as far as the cost, just the cost of doing business aspect.
That's what caught my attention. I don't even remember how I voted on it. I might've voted against it, I don't remember.
So there was, there were salary adjustments made last year. So that went beyond the MOE, those salary adjustments last year for this current fiscal year. And then if we do salary adjustments this year, that'll be beyond the maintenance of effort requirement as well. So that's a good chunk of how the expenses increase because you, people get raises. They don't stay sad.
I think, I think there's a human resource management issue here.
As far as how the staff is.
How, how, how that, how that entire sheriff's department is, is prioritized and moved around. I mean, I.
Well, I mean, maybe, I think it almost has to, we have to have the sheriff and, and, you know, like, go over from 23 to now, because guess what? The problem too is if we're reading all the data, says it's decreasing, decreasing, you know, crime is decreasing and separate mental health is, yet all the, you know, you need more staff and that's going up. I want to be supportive of law enforcement, but I think that's.
And we got to draw the county attorney in too and talk to her. I, I mean, cause, cause, uh.
The whole court system too is my opinion.
Well, I mean, maybe not everybody gets their probation revoked. Maybe, maybe, you know, if half of them if, if you're seeing large numbers of probations now being revoked because the number of cross-border crimes are going down and we're replacing them with probation violations, that, that's the question I want to know is why all of a sudden now there's these higher revocations of probation? And do all of them have to go to the jail? You know, maybe more ankle bracelets, maybe more aggressive supervision or something, I don't know. But I'm trying to figure out, I, 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 what I don't want to, what I, God, I'm going to get helpful what I'm about to say. What I, what I don't want to see is us creating a cottage industry here, um, at the expense of the taxpayers.
I don't think it is.
Okay.
And I've been looking at it for a while.
Uh, yeah, I trust your.
Yeah. Uh, I can see, I, I see overload everywhere. E- e- every place where, where the government is, is going to expand resources is overloaded by demand as, as the economy either is going up or down. So, I mean, it, how, how are things, I mean, it's, it's a big, we got X amount of months until November when people are going to decide, do I want to get rid of this, this tax or is this okay type of thing? And so we don't know what the economy is going to look like in November.
Nope.
And that's, that's going to be, if everybody goes, goes out there and posts their pocket, look. Right now, we don't know. And we don't even know if, if the vote's going to get passed, what'd you say, by the end of June or something like that? Yeah. So it's, I mean, generally, if, if we, if we have to make decisions, we gotta aim low, be conservative and, uh, hope that things turn out better than our pessimistic, my pessimistic tendencies. And, and because if, if everybody's hurting, then everybody's hurting and you can't just raise taxes. It's a full Laffer curve thing, you know, you wish you'd go out there and, and, uh, help everybody out. But the way to do it is not by taxing the rich.
Right.
Or taxing anybody. Taxing consumers, um. So what do you, what would you say is a more conservative approach? You had, had dip into the, dip into the, uh, jail tax fund, which none of us want to do or tip, tip into the contingent fund, which we also don't want to do, but which one do we not want to do?
I mean, my, my conservative approach is the, is reversing the swap just simply for this year and we can look at it again in the future. They have not filled those positions yet, so I feel like that's the least harm to any current employee. I do think it is a good idea. It, it's, if we could do everything, that would still be on the list. I understand where the sheriff's office is going from an operations standpoint and the separation of, of staff, of inmates. It's just perhaps this year, it's perhaps too much. I would hate to get into a situation where we're hiring those people and then having to take too much.
Yeah, I don't want to do that either, but.
So that's my concern.
That, that, that's a very good opinion. Um, so in that regard, let's take a look at the PowerPoint that, that was prepared about this before and see if, uh, now it's, what, what'd we say, December? Now it's five months later or something like that, or do we think the same as, you know, before we were thinking in December?
I think the, the idea is just as good as it was in December. I, I just don't, I, I appreciate that they haven't, they have been cautious as well in not hiring people because they, the sheriff's office themselves, I think, was uncertain about the future of this initiative. So I appreciate their, their understanding and partnership on that. It's. I, I would like to see the tax get approved and then we know what we're dealing with from a revenue standpoint and then we go forward with new initiatives.
Okay, so I, I think that you, you have the right idea. Postpone. And that, that's just reality. And if, if it's, if it's, uh, Daryl and he wants to replace, you know, water heaters and, and air conditioners or something like that and, uh, we don't know if we're going to have the money, no matter who it is, we're looking at the same situation. Yet the difference is constitutional rights. You gotta, you gotta make sure everybody's constitutional rights are protected. You're going to, you know?
Yeah, yeah, no. And then, and then of course, the whole fire thing is in part of this, is we're just talking to, this is salaries, right? Just position.
Right, the fire alarm is a whole different discussion and it would fall under facilities budget.
Exponential growth is what I'm getting at. Population is steady, they're going down. I'm just, I'm just that's a significant jump.
Uh, then, then figure out which, which item you think is, is the specific, the significant jump, jump and take it apart and look at it.
Wasn't this where we invite the sheriff, you know, to come and answer our questions? I mean, he's online, I believe, but I mean, if. But I mean, after when we see the, because I really, like you, don't know what happened back then or what it's based on. You know, when this swap happened, I, I'm really kind of in the, kind of dark about it.
It's not just the swap, the swap is in addition, I'm looking at the numbers of the 700, almost 700K here that this huge cost increase occurred. You know, it's mainly.
I mean, jail medical services is, um, the cost of those medical services.
But if, if the population's staying the same, why, why at 320,000?
The, um, medical issues of the population?
And then when you say severity, are you talking, uh, uh, age-related wounds or are you talking health, mental health?
Mental health.
Maintenance in operation, if it's related to just keeping the jail.
Diabetes.
Maintenance in operation is just keeping the lights on and the pipes from leaking, right?
And they actually went down in rep, total rep, I mean, from their expenses in FY '25 to FY '26. We don't have that many.
What's this 200 and?
But the 283 differential is in jail medical services.
Yeah, well, but, and why, why is it showing additional funding needed 339K over?
With the funding request.
That's what the funding, so two. That's what the funding, so two forty-three.
Just the funding request tool for the jail.
And what, what, do we have that breakdown from what, did we have that at the previous meeting?
No, that's, that's in this one, this slide right here. That's jail medical and jail maintenance.
So that's additional, again, determining. So it's not really maintenance, that's that's.
A lot of jail medical, some of it is, although that that salary adjustment covers all areas of jail districts, so. I have actually portioned that out.
I'd like to see the breakout for that. What what is maintenance? That I want to know, fixing the pipes, keeping the lights on, keeping the boiler room, and then what is? Everything else that is adding to that number?
So operation and maintenance is salary and wages for all the detention officers and admin staff. It includes the vendor contracts for. The cafeteria area, you know, the food service. Getting clues. Supplies for the detention staff.
And that's coming out of one hundred and thirteen?
In our office supplies, um operating supplies for parent and maintenance, their fleet is in there. Professional services, telephone, sorry, I'm looking at my.
Number I'm looking, is that two hundred thirteen?
That's their current budget. Yeah, so I'm just listing off some of the expense categories that they have within the operation.
The one that's up here on the screen, that's the one we're looking at?
Oh, so these are the funding requests, this is the discretionary funding request for this, so the, this could be added to the budget or declined from the budget.
I don't know, you've seen a lot of different, you know, areas and I'm I'm trying to just, so they're on the two hundred and eighty-eight, what you just talked about now? Is it two eighty? So that's um the cafeteria for the food that feeds.
So so let me start over. No, jail district funding request, this is the, this is what the jail dis, the jail is asking. In addition to, over their current budget. And and the 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 nurse practitioner is under jail medical. The detention health services operational increases is under jail medical.
So that's what you're talking like, need for diabetes treatment or.
It's a variety, okay.
And then the four hundred thousand is the officer's part-time.
Part-time detention officer increase. That's for.
How many F T Es is that? That's, uh, part-time is is.
Do you have that information? I'm not sure. Commander Bradshaw, could you explain the part-time detention officer increase a little bit more? If you're still online.
Part-time detention officers work anywhere from four to nineteen and a half hours a week. Um at their discretion, we usually publish um a list of needs where we need uh coverage. And then um that group of people calls in and says, hey, I'll work this day or I'll work four hours this day or whatever the case may be. But when we were originally, years ago, when we got this program in place, we were only allocated twelve thousand dollars. For part-time detention officers and it it just doesn't go very far, so. That additional forty thousand, we believe, is gonna really help us out, like I presented when we did our budget request, that it's gonna reduce a significant amount of overtime.
Which in turn reduces burnout.
Uh, so Mr. Bradshaw, in terms, if you could, if you could put the. The number of officers in terms of how many full-time F T Es it's equivalent to. Or how many full-time F T Es equivalent are we gonna spend forty thousand on if you can?
Um, you you really can't because they, depending on on the part-time officer. Um they can work, you know, they maybe they only work four or ten hours this month, but next month, you know, they work. Um, you know, sixty. So so it it doesn't really relate to a full-time officer. It depends on where our, you know, how much sickly people take, when we need them, when we don't need them, and how much they actually work.
Okay, so the the typical detention officer is working three twelve-hour shifts, is that correct for a week?
Well, it's it's on a, it's a, uh, it's a two-week schedule, um where they work three on, two off, or two on, three off. Um, they get every other Friday, Saturday, Sunday off and it has, uh, yeah, so it's a little over eighty hours. Um, every two weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think we need to schedule another work session for this.
We are running out of time, that's my only caution, we'll have to do it the first week of June, um. Because we have tentative the second week of June.
I I gotta, I gotta get smarter on this. That's fine.
That might move faster than it's gonna be a whole meeting.
All right, let's uh, let's wrap it up because we're way behind.
Chairman Antoni, real quick, um would you like to uh tour those facilities so you have a better idea of what what the staff.
I don't think I need to tour it, I I just, I just want to see the manpower application based on the floor plan. And then, and then I'm gonna have to come and talk to you and the sheriff um on your human resourcing. And have a, pardon the pun, frank discussion on that. Cause I I'm trying to, I'm trying to absorb this understanding here and and, you know, maybe there's just a prioritization. Disagreement or a misunderstanding, but I I I'm just, I'm just like looking at the cost growth here.
Mr. Chairman, it may be that we're gonna have to get real creative, I don't know. I mean, if if we're looking at at serious unknowns, like the state budget and is the jail tax gonna pass or not? Then we might have to be real creative.
I would prefer to keep everything in the general fund and deal with the cost growth. Somehow through that that process, not just running to the jail district. Yeah, no, to the jail district pot of money and take it from the jail district pot of money. Right, so I mean, I would, I I I want to see it because. If we were to go with a a plan to pay off the jail with the jail district tax. And then dissolve the district upon that completion, then we still gotta figure out and run the jail. On a general fund budget, and this, this, this is a problem here. And that's what I'm trying to get a grasp of, is why is this, why did we see that? I I know some of it, what some of it is, but I I'm just trying to understand, I mean, why? Maybe if we have attrition in in the patrol deputy force, we can't convert the salary to a correction officer.
That's what I meant by being creative and the other uh. Uh possibility that Sean pointed out was postponing, postponing the the so-called swap. And and see where that brings us and then in November, all of a sudden, the. The tax passes, then everything's different and we can say, okay, well, we could do this, then we could do that and start. Start making up for how how pessimistic we have been like right now. If it happens.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. All right, our next uh meeting, supposed to be. Now, um, the flood district meeting. Uh, did we knock that out real quick? In in like, in like five minutes and just let Chin know we're gonna be a little late. Oh, we are?
Yeah, we're not behind. We started at twelve thirty.
For some reason, I thought we we were only gonna do the judge, it was only gonna be a half an hour. It was an hour? So you kind of do. Yeah, oh, yeah, we're adjourned, I'm sorry, we're adjourned.